Hiya everyone, we will get going in just a minute. I can see there's a couple of people just making their way in, so I'll just give them a few seconds to get settled. Right, welcome everyone to today's North East Local Area Committee meeting. So this is a meeting that's open to the public. My name's Fran Belbin, I'm the Chair of the Local Area Committee and a councillor for Firth Park Ward. I'm also a governor here at Chaucer School, so just to say thank you to the school for hosting us today as well. Before I get everybody else to introduce themselves, I'm just gonna hand over to Philippa, who's the Committee Secretary, to read out the housekeeping arrangements.
Thank you Chair, good evening everyone. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that all mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no quieted plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the council staff present. The assembly point is out of these doors and on the grass area. The toilets are situated out of these doors, right along the corridor, as far as the desk and then turn right at the desk into the foyer. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering this room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. Thank you.
Thank you Philippa. And I'm gonna ask the members around the table, who are the formal members of the committee, to introduce themselves. Shall we start at your end, Mike?
Hello, my name's Mike Chaplin. I'm one of your councillors for Saudi Ward, that's this ward where you are here today.
Good evening councillor Mark Jones, Burngrie Ward. Long one. Peter Price, Shire Green, Brightside.
I'm Philippa Bedet, Democratic Services Officer. Lindsay Hill, Light Manager.
Talia Bissin, councillor for Burngrie Ward and Deputy Chair.
Sophia Said, Burngrie Ward councillor.
Gribbine Abdoukayoun, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Thanks, we do have apologies from councillor Tony Dance from Saudi Ward and councillor Gary Wetherall from Shire Green Ward. And I know we do have councillors, Abdaan Mohammed and Don Dale joining us, but I think they're stuck in traffic, so they will be with us shortly. I'll just explain how the meeting will work, come to you in a minute, Mick. Go on.
Now, I mean, if you have people to come to these meetings, is it too much trouble to put up Bincom for them? This is the third meeting we've been to, but the last one we were promised a half a dream.
My apologies Mick. We'll note it and try and make sure that when we're sourcing venues, this one was quite quickly after the last one, and getting the venues sorted can be quite tricky. We are trying to circulate them around, but we will make a note and very much attempt to make sure we'll get copies on this term.
We're ordering them so that we can bring our water with us, because there's no water facility and that's the problem. So we'll be at the next meeting.
No, we're told by this year when it's been Chaucer School would get a holiday.
I think we were originally going to be in a different room when it would have been easier, but noted for next term. I'll get on with then with how the meeting's going to work. So we've got some formal parts of the agenda and some formal business that we have to conduct. And then Lindsay, the Light Manager, is going to outline the spend report, which is what we've spent our funding on so far this year. And there will be the opportunity for members of the committee and the public to ask any questions about that. Then we're going to have a presentation which looks at the last year of the LAC and how we've done there. And then we want to move out to workshop discussions, which are these tables at the back. And we'll ask members of the public and indeed these services who are represented here to gather around the tables so we can look at what's worked well over the last year and also have a discussion about what we want to see over the next year. Then we'll have our usual breakout session, which is the Interactive Roadshow and the various services that are here. It's your opportunity to go and have conversations with different services. And then we'll come back together for public questions and answers hopefully. So I think I've already covered the apologies for absence there, haven't I? Item three is the exclusion of the public and the press. We haven't got any items at this meeting that require the exclusion of the public or press. Item four is any declarations of interest. So I need to ask members if they have any declarations of interest for this meeting. We'll hit that as a no. Item five is the minutes of their previous meeting. So these have been published in advance and they have been circulated. There's a couple of items I want to draw attention to from the public questions. Is there any comments from members first of all, or questions on those? The two public questions I wanted to report back on, I don't think he's here today, but we had a question from Graham Jones, which was about the Clean Air Zone and the impact on Burngrie and other areas that weren't within the Clean Air Zone. That we said we would escalate to the Transport and Regeneration Committee. Now since then, Graham's been provided with what was quite a long answer. I won't read it out because it was full of tables and nitrogen levels readings and things like that. It would be quite lengthy and complex to read out. And we fed that back to Graham and that's caused him to raise a number of other questions. So we've agreed with Graham who asked the question that rather than us escalating his original question up to the Transport Committee, he's going to respond to the response that he got. And I think the response has been published as well, has it? Philippa, am I right in saying that? It hasn't been published as yet. So Graham is going to ask a number of questions directly to the Transport and Regeneration Committee based on that one. The other question that we had from Jodie Marshall, which was about parking around the Firth Park area in particular, but I know it's an issue right across the Local Area Committee. I just wanted to mention that. I know in Firth Park, there's some work ongoing by the forum, looking at how we address that as an area. And whatever comes out of that little project, we will report back to this meeting to see if there's some other useful things that come out of that that might be useful in other areas as well. Based on those, are we happy to approve the minutes? That's great. Okay, in that case, I'm now gonna hand you over to Lindsay, who's going to go through the spend report.
Thanks Chair. I'm bringing the spend report today just to note the spend that we've had so far this year. From the last meeting, I brought a spend report there and it's only the figures that have actually changed throughout this report. As you recall, at the last meeting, we created a ninth theme of the cost of living and we've actually had some spend against the welcoming spaces grants that have gone out. They've been really successful and we're gonna be rolling that money into next year so that people can still keep applying for that money because there's still some funding left for that. The report outlines any money that's remaining and some provisional ideas about what we might be doing with that spend. But there's nothing new in there, like I said, that wasn't reported at the last meeting. There might be just the odd one, couple of things. So it is just there for noting, Chair, please.
Thanks Lindsay. Are there any questions on the report from members, all the members of the public? Very quiet tonight. Okay, are members happy to note that the report then? Thank you. Okay, so we're now going to move on to, I believe it's Katie, who's going to give us a bit of a presentation around what we've done over the last year. Just before we get started on this, I did want to say a big thank you to our LAC officers who have worked incredibly hard over the last year to make sure that we're meeting the priorities that were set out by the public. I know they've all like put in tons and tons of effort and I hope that's, we'll be seeing that through the video that we've seen. But a big thank you for them for all the work they've done. This is actually the last meeting of this cycle in terms of the financial year, so we'll be going into a new year next year, so I'm looking forward to seeing all this summer. Katie.
Should have probably brought. So hi everyone, my name's Katie Towne and I'm a Community Service Officer within the North East. And I'm just gonna give you a quick overview of what your Local Area Committee's been up to within the past year and slightly a bit longer than that. So Local Area Committees were introduced as a way for people to make a difference in their area and communities. And the LACs are an opportunity for people to get involved, say what is great about their area and what improvements they'd like to see and what matters to their community. So since LACs were introduced in May 2021, we've made our best efforts to make sure that you all feel included and that you are making a difference. So just on what we've done so far is consultation with the local community and services and groups. And that's helped us develop the community plan with the priorities. And the priorities are outside, if anyone wants to refresh the memory, because we are looking at the ninth priority, which is the cost of living crisis. We've not actually drafted the priorities yet, but we will do. And obviously, if you want to submit anything or you want to kind of give any feedback towards that, any ideas, then you're more than welcome to. We also held public meetings and events, promoted funding streams and then built or built on relationships with new and existing community groups. Move to the next slide. Thank you. So we started off with consultation. As I mentioned, we spoke to residents and asked what they liked about their area and what they didn't like or what they wanted to improve. We spoke to local people, services and community groups. And there was also an online survey as well. From that, I've just listed on here a few things of what people said about their neighbourhoods. But obviously, that's what helped us develop the community plan. So a lot of people said that they felt like there was a strong sense of community. They liked the diversity of the North East. They felt we had good transport links and good open spaces. And then they just mentioned about the more local community events and activities, investing in facilities for families and young people, education around litter and environment and then obviously cleaner areas. So from some of these things on here, we developed the priorities. And then over the past year, we've been working on these priorities and obviously how we can put that into place. These are the eight themes as well, and then the ninth, the cost of living, what we've introduced recently. So this is just a bit about the public meetings and events. So we've held over five public meetings, giving you an opportunity to ask any questions and share your views and also update on anything that we've been doing. We've also listened to you and you mentioned that you wanted some free community events, visible for the family or for all ages. So we've hosted International Youth Day, which was in, I think, August to September time this year. There's been Longley Four Greens Fund Day that we've hosted alongside Longley Four Greens Community Centre. And everyone's feedback from that was that they were really good. I think there were about 200 people, which we'll hear Penny saying a bit later, attend and that it were, well, they wanted more, I suppose. And then I've just listed as well some events that we've part funded. So we've put some money towards the following events, which was the Winter Market on Els May Green, Hartlebrook Festival Light Switch on, Firth Park Christmas Fair and then Steel City Corridors. There have been a few more and then there's some proposed few more that we're gonna hopefully get, well, work with people to promote those within the next few months. So this is just funding. So we have promoted several funding streams. Ward pots are, well, we're already in place before we came, but we've helped promote those and then helped community groups as well, if they've wanted to apply for funding. I've just listed the different wards and then the money that they had for our community groups. And that was for the financial year 2022 to 2023, so it'll renew in April. We don't currently know how much money we've got yet, but we're hoping it'll be along the same lines. Then there's also been the LAC 100K. Each Local Area Committee was given the 100K to work towards meeting the priorities and obviously developing the community plan. So we have dedicated some of that to the cost of living welcome spaces fund, which is currently out at the moment. And that's just helping groups and organisations become a welcome space. So I know there's a few groups in here today that have been accepted for the funding, might not have received it just yet, but we are making sure that groups can become a welcome space. So if anyone is wanting to find out about welcome spaces, they're on the BAF's website. And once groups have received the funding, they should be put on there as well. It's just a warm welcome space, it's usually provided if anyone's wanting to visit and they usually have got an activity on as well. Then it's in partnership with Saw Let's Build Health Grants as well. We've then had the Queen's Jubilee funding, which was about £6,000. And that was given to us for the Queen's Jubilee, I think it was in June last year. And it just helped community groups to put on an activity, a free activity for the community. And that's all around the North East. We've then got the, well, we've then had the additional half-term youth funding as well, which we worked in partnership with Youth Services for. And they gave us some funding for additional activities during the half-term for young people. I think it were around 11 to up to 18. And then also, we've built relationships with community groups, as I mentioned earlier. So we interviewed a few community groups and we wanted them to share their stories and how they think that LACs may have helped them within the past year.
I'm Margaret Whelan, I'm a local resident for Shire Green and I'm also an active member of the Friends Of Group for Concorde Park.
Can you tell us a bit about Concorde Park?
Concorde Park is the second largest park in Sheffield and what I've grown up in. And it's a lovely open space, but it's the part what needs a lot of TLC. Trying to achieve to get the TLC put into the park. I hope like getting the youth on board as well as local residents and local people just come to visit the park. At present, in the last few months, we did the Shout Light event, which was a lantern parade. A couple of residents, like, have never seen a lantern parade in the park before and they really enjoyed seeing it going through the park. So moving forward, we've done consultation for coffee on the run, where we ask questions, get feedback, give people a free coffee. We have got another one coming up in the near future.
In terms of events and things like that, I know you've got the nut and natter that's coming into place soon.
Yes. LAC has been fantastic, they've put us in contact with a lot of people, a lot of organisations. We've teamed up with the Golf Club, which is based in Concorde Park. LAC have put us in touch with local community groups, the Parks Department. They've put us in touch with the local councillors as well, who have been really helpful.
And from that, have you achieved anything in terms of a bit of TLC for the park?
We have achieved quite a bit up to now. We've got two new benches put in through the Parks Department. We've had a notice board, which we'll be getting put back into place after it had been vandalised. Hopefully, moving forward, we'll have access to the cook bar, but that's in the near future.
And what are you wanting to achieve with the park?
A warm, loving park with a lot of open space for everybody to enjoy, with new equipment if possible. Yeah, Concorde Friends Of Group is a small group of people. We are looking for active members. It doesn't take a lot of your time, though. We have got a Facebook page, email is on the Friends Of Group. Are we checking for emails there, like?
Hi, my name's Penny Soffo. I'm the Centre Development Coordinator for Longley Four Greens on Saudi Avenue. Just to talk about the relationship with the LAC and some of the impact. One of the first things that introduced us to the LAC was when the development officers came out doing the asset mapping in the area. And what that did, it introduced us to the development workers who we've been working closely with and it's been about caring, sharing and networking. We also see the LAC in the areas developing the local area strategies. And what we tried to do to complement that as Longley Four Greens was support local residents with Kate Redshaw and developing a local power. So all those structures that are in place with the LAC, we're looking at the community on the ground development strategies. So we're taking listening to local people and then taking turning that into action. So one example would be the food pantry. Local residents, the time that, during the pandemic, we were struggling economically and even more so during cost of living. So we set up a local food pantry for local members, where they pay £3 membership, get a comprehensive shopping and pay £3 a week. The next thing that we did with the LAC on was we've tried to engage with the wider, wider members within the community. So we came to do, we've got a fund day on here. So the LAC paid for the money for the fund day and made supplies of all the food, which the volunteers here helped together. And the fund day had over 200 people that came in on that day, which was brilliant for the Longley Four Greens Centre, because a lot of people have never been to the centre before. So what that did, it gave them the opportunity to come into the centre and see what the centre is all about and what they have on offer. We've also linked in with the LAC to get some of their funding for the non-£3 activity. And we've enacted to drop chairs for 8 to 16-year-olds, which we couldn't afford without the LAC funding at that particular time. Also, the other thing that we've worked with the LAC, what's happened, is the use of community assets being bought in the area and one of them being a deal set, which is what we found is a very life-saving equipment. And it gives us the opportunity to help people if they are having tough times. All the volunteers have now had another feed, their day training as well. So without the LAC, we wouldn't be in the position where we are today through not working in partnership with them. Thank you very much.
I'm Lily, I'm a local resident, I've been staying here since the 1980s in different places, but apparently I live very near to the park. I've always learned at the park. Yeah, so I think as a local resident, I've had to get involved in two little things and then just build and build up to the end of the year.
Could you tell us about the group that you part of?
Yeah, it's Friends Of Field Park, which has been in existence for a long time. And it's done a lot of work in the park and also, it's quite unique something about this park that we've got this huge, big, great, beautiful building in it, which has been used for lots of different groups and lots of different centres over the years. And I got involved about five, six years ago, just really to help keep the house open to the local community and do a bit of work in the park as well. In a sense, I've talked mainly about what happened since Covid and a big thing last year, last July, we had a revitalised Abbey Fielding Festival, which is an amazing event in the city. But we've kept it small and local for local people. We've got four brands, we're able to put on festivals for people of all ages. It was a great event, I think it was good timing, it was so good after all the Covid stuff to come together in the park. And then everyone's now demanding that we do it again this year, so we're just kind of trying to have a unique and organised community and trying to do, it's been what we did last year, trying to do the bridge with tight loads, you know, there's not a lot of money out there. So really, it's just a thing to bring people in the park, get people together. We've got a great volunteer garden group and they work quite closely with parks that actually forget to have a garden and it's been very nice. They've just been working, a bit weather dependent, but you know, normally on Tuesdays and Thursdays we're in the garden. A replanting, getting rid of some of the overgrown bits. We do the standard stuff like litter picks and clear up. Again, sometimes we just do that on our own, but sometimes we have big events and part of the Spring Clean Week, which we've got coming up. We're gonna have a big spring clean of the park, we're looking to try and get rid of a lot of the... I mean, the litter gets picked up on a regular basis, but all the other bits and pieces and what's happening in the house, we've got quite a lot of arts work going on, community art. Most of it is free, we might have had that for a donation. We've got a number of projects based there, Burngrie Messenger's still just about going there. We've got Green City Action, they do a lot of work around the environment across Burngrie. We've got the Right Repair Cafe, which is running from their run by volunteers and this is doing local repairs for people. We've got quite a lot, we've got good links for local charities all over there and across the house. We really love to do that. Obviously, through contact with the LAC, we've had funding for some, it's not huge amounts, but those little bits just helps us do things and make things happen. And then just, I suppose, just having contact with other groups in the area. One of us from our co-op normally tries to attend the meetings and then obviously just often there. So sometimes it's just like saying hello, but sometimes you can actually ask questions. I feel that Abbey Field House is a bit, or Abbey Field Park, we're not a citywide destination park, our argument is. We're the destination park for this area. And it's used by all different types, different groups, informal sports, activities. People have a lot of parties in the park and everything. So we think it's a really important park and we think it's quite unique, but it's got the big Abbey Field House in it. So yeah, we're just really looking to expand what we can do and actually make the house the best it can be and make it part of the best it can be for this community. But with the Sable project, as we've called it, we want to try and bring back into use the building. A bit of a staged approach, but create a kitchen facility, which may be a part of the cafe for part of the week, but also from some of the conversation to a customer, to the local people, local groups. And it would be great, you know, we could run cafes there for young people one night a week and get lots of informal sports, like football, cricket and everything. And they could then sort of like, you know, hang around in a cafe for after their game. It's just kind of that socialisation with the bowls club, because they've got third down, so a game has worked and we've got volunteers in it, we've worked really closely to try and get the bowls club to run it. And obviously, they'll need some others to sit and have tea and coffee after work.
Oh, that sounds really positive, thank you very much. Is there anything else to add on?
Just that I think LACs are still quite new, people aren't quite aware of what they're for. And I kind of really like the idea of having more local friends.
Thank you very much.
I was just gonna say thank you to everyone that helps us make the video. Apologies for the editing skills, but we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thanks Katie, and again, thanks for all your work in doing that. So our plan next, as I say, was to break out into some groups to talk about what you think has gone well over the last year, but perhaps more importantly, what do we need to do more of. I think the video there has been really useful in saying that the LAC isn't just about handing out small pots of money. They're helpful, but it's actually about trying to bring different people together, including different services from the council, different groups around the area and, you know, some of the different services that we've got out there and that's just as important. I know, you know, some of our services have been brilliantly well engaged and got more and more engaged with local groups, but we can always do better. So we'd really like to hear from you what we can be doing better and which services you need to be involved. It's also just worth mentioning, because there is a bit of money available for this. So at yesterday's full council budget meeting, we did agree an additional £100,000 funding per LAC and then some additional funding on top of that, which will be distributed between the LACs based on the Index of Multiple Deprivation. So they haven't exactly worked out how much that will be for each area yet, but we are talking about a budget of at least £100,000 and it'll be a reasonable amount more for this particular area, because we tend to... We're quite low in the, low high, anyway. We're a relatively deprived area, we're high in the Index of Multiple Deprivation. So there will be some funds available through that. And also, I know it has been raised in the past, we do have a bid that we're still waiting for the final sign off from government, from the Shared Prosperity Fund. But that should also be putting some additional staff support into our LAC. So I think we've been looking... So I think we've been lucky in our area that we've had some fantastic community development workers. And we're hoping that this shared prosperity funding will, um, enable us to, uh, to keep some of those workers on as well. Uh, who can do more development work with different organisations in the area. And potentially there's also funding for, to support groups to bring in more external funding. So as we just talked about Abbeyfield Park there and potentially funding for buildings like Abbeyfield House, working with groups to develop things like business plans, funding bids, um, to bring in more external, uh, join more external funding as well. So there's a few other possibilities. We'll ask you just to break yourselves up around the tables at the back here. There will be someone, uh, leading each group and someone taking notes on each group. So if you'd like to arrange yourselves around there for about around 15 minutes and we'll just get some feedback from you, uh, for where we're going next. Question. Uh, what we'll do is we'll just get a little bit of feedback from the groups. We have got full notes from all of them, so we'll just hear a little bit of feedback from each of them before we move on to the public questions. Shall we start at that? End again, Mike, you were convening one of the groups, were you?
Come on. I'm probably not best qualified because I don't have the notes in front of me. I don't know where they went. Um. Wing it. That is, that is so not fair on people. I think, I think what's been, what's come out has been that engagement has been good. Um, but it does seem to vary according to which, um, which ward we land up in every, every three months, because not everyone from Saudi can get over to Shire Green and Brightside and, uh, and vice versa. Um, we did, we did have a discussion about how, how best to sustain, um, community groups. Um, because you get people who come along who do, who do have a lot of enthusiasm to do, to do things and want to get things moving. And then they might get hit with a domestic crisis and then that takes them, them out and they, um, they can't, um, they don't have the time or capacity to engage. Um, also, um, I think it was flagged up that, uh, one or two people are also coping with mental health problems and issues and, and that can lead, lead to a fall off in interest or disengagement. Um, so, but it was, it was said that having the LACs there and having a community development officer has, has been very positive and has helped keep some of those groups going. Um, you know, when, when they've hit these, um, problems and, and obstacles, so that's, that's been positive.
Dawn, do you want to take feedback from yours?
Yep, thank you. Quite similar really. We looked at what's gone really well over the last year. And, um, what we were talking about in our, in our group was, um, the, the benefit of being able to network and be connected. So having the LAC offices that have been able to connect work, connect groups into other services and other offices from other departments in the council. So things such as support for our tenants and residents association, linking and backing with their Tara liaison officer has been really helpful. So the Tara have felt more supported. And just generally the work that's been done across our community to build community spirit again. So the events and activities such as lantern parades, switch on for light, you know, Winker Bank had a street party for Queen's Jubilee. Those things are really important in communities and without the support often from our LAC offices, some of those things would have been pretty hard to get off the ground. So our, our groups have felt really supported and that's what they feel has gone well, gone well over the last year. I think what the group that we were working with said that they would like to see, uh, moving forward in the public meetings, um, is, is when the promotion, when we promote what, that we've got a meeting, is letting people know who is going to be here. So, um, the ladies on our table got an invite actually from the police to let them know that they were going to be here and that was their driver to come tonight because they needed to speak to the police about a particular issue. So I think when we advertise that we're here, it's letting people know who's going to be here from which department, uh, in the council or partner. And then that kind of, that's your motivation to come. I think there was an issue around people finding out about the meetings as well. So like I said, the ladies that came tonight found out from the police, not from the council. So I think we need to look at our, how we get that out there. Um, all our tenants should be getting some information, even if, you know, I know not everyone's a council tenant, but one of the ladies on our table is and didn't know about it. Uh, so looking at that, I think that's really important. And what we were looking at, what we'd like from the council is it from the LAC, sorry, is a funding directory. So looking at alternative opportunities for funding for small groups in our area. So we know we've got LAC funding, but actually there's lots of other funding available, small amounts of money. What we could support our local community groups, um, to access. So it's having a bit of a directory available, even if it's just, you know, of double sided, this is the, the hot bit of funding in this next few months. Um, and then what is available for, and then some support from our offices. And I know, I know our offices do this anyway, but letting people know that there is support out there to be able to access some of that funding for some of our smaller groups who've not got that capacity. So that's what we covered really.
Thanks, Dawn. Uh, Talia?
Uh, well, in, uh, our table it was quite similar. Uh, what went well in this year is the partnership, working relationship with officers and councillors. Uh, and, uh, officers attendance, uh, from different department organisations. So, uh, and, uh, the issues they want to, you know, for the next, uh, financial year, I mean, next year. Uh, improving, uh, tackling the litter, it's, uh, I mean, north east, uh, like it's not just one particular ward, but, you know, in different wards. Uh, uh, how we can improve is, uh, you know, for the young kids, making contact with schools. So, uh, how, it's kind of education, isn't it? So, uh, if we make a contact with schools, uh, allocate some sort of funding, uh, some incentive, uh, to the kids. Uh, uh, if, it is not just enforcing the kids, uh, you pick the litter. But it's this kind of, uh, they are champion of the school, you know, uh, and they can teach parents or siblings or, uh, others. Uh, for the businesses, uh, fly tipping or litter around, uh, uh, business centers. So how we can support the businesses to make their, you know, shop fronts, our payments, uh, clean if they are clean, so how we can support and kind of, you know, highlight, uh, award them. So, uh, another issue, the open spaces, uh, how we can make them, uh, community allotments. Uh, and for fly tipping, uh, how we can tackle more comes of whether, uh, it's available or not. And, uh, there was another issue, uh, development, uh, in Parkwood Spring especially. Uh, the, you know, country park in, in the city, so.
Thank you. And Abdo?
Okay, um, yes, similar issues, uh, some, some issues quite similar, but in terms of what's gone well over the past year. Um, some people are still, I'm just going to get rid of the key points and Osman's got sort of detailed notes, um, for later. Um, yeah, some people are still getting their heads on what's, what LACs are about, uh, but they're good to have, better to have them than not. Uh, people said, people felt that, um, some of the work that's gone on obviously wouldn't have happened if, um, if, if it hadn't been for the LACs and the parks improvements were given as an example. Um, some things or some issues are dealt directly with, um, by LACs, which is good, but those that can't be or that are not, uh, do get passed to relevant departments, committees, um, officers, uh, in the council to be dealt with. So the LACs are facilitating as well as doing direct work in terms of getting some of the issues resolved. Uh, somebody gave an example of some, some good stuff that's going in first park in terms of, uh, the benches that have been, uh, that have been put in the park. Um, but then they said that they could have done with, with backs on them because people can't lean back, particularly the elderly people who need to sit down and, and take a rest. Uh, perhaps, uh, better communication when we're doing these kind of initiatives. Um, in terms of the future, what we'd like from the future, from the LACs in the, in the future, uh, developing on some of the initiatives that have already been started this year. And then some of the issues that have been brought on, uh, brought about or that have been raised and haven't been sort of fully resolved, car parking, um, fly tipping and the common issues, rubbish, um, still obviously across all the LAC area, rats, et cetera. So these are the, uh, sort of future issues that still need to be resolved. Um, perhaps even get agencies like AMI and Viola come to the meetings, uh, or attendees meetings or representative so that they can hear for, you know, for themselves directly what the issues are, uh, and we can hear from them. Um, local groups to be helping to establish the LACs themselves. And the LACs promoting themselves, everybody else chipping in as well to promote the LACs with each, amongst, amongst each other. There's a lot going on, needs to be better coordinated and, and brought together. Uh, the LACs have taken some time to establish, but, um, now we don't, we don't want to start losing some of the momentum that's, that's just taken on and especially uh, keeping the teams together, the staff together. But one of the key things that came out was communication, communication, communication. Basically, we need to speak to people, communicate with people by, you know, more, more means than one, various means, whatever means are, you know, that are available to us. But communication is key to getting information out to all the community groups as much as possible and as large as possible.
Thank you. And thanks again to everyone for taking part in the discussion. As we said, we have got full notes of those discussions, so we'll take those back and we will be using those to develop our priorities for next year and how we, uh, and how we communicate, which is obviously a key one that's come out. And some of those projects, I know we've done a few projects around litter, fly tipping, uh, parks and so on. But I think, you know, our idea isn't quite clear, priorities coming out tonight, so we'll, uh, we can take those forward and we'll be discussing them with you, uh, next time as well. Um, I'm going to move on in the agenda then. So the next item on our agenda, um, that I need to cover is the formal referrals to policy committees. Um, so people might remember if you've been to the last few meetings that we did refer a question up around landlord licensing to the housing committee. I can't remember the exact sequence of those. Um, so that was escalated up to the housing committee, uh, who responded basically that, um, there is going to be consideration of the extension of the selective licensing scheme. So there's currently a selective licensing scheme running in the Abidale corridor area of the city. Uh, and they're looking at rolling that out, uh, further. And this is going to be discussed at the March meeting of the Housing Policy Committee, which is next Friday. And you are able to tune into that online if you, if you wish to or watch it afterwards. So, um, just to, uh, reflect that questions that are raised here do get referred up and do get considered at the full council level as well. Uh, so now we'll move on to the final part of the agenda, which is public questions. We've had one submitted in writing and then I'll take any that have come up from the floor. Um, I don't know where to go. Do you want to ask it yourself? Yep. And then Darren, I'm warning you to be on standby because I might ask you to respond to some of this one thing, is it here? It is a parks issue.
My name's Chris Fox. For those that don't know me, I am part of, um, lots of activities in Fair Park and surrounding area. Um, I'm just also quite keen to find out some more information if I could ask the councillors here. Um, realistically, it was a strange question, but I wanted to know what plans exist, if any, that to continue the work done to develop the green flag award-winning park status for many of our parks in our area. There's been a lot of work done over the last years to get many of the parks receiving flags and awards. But I know at the minute in these terms of cutbacks and tightening of belts, that the gardening team themselves are quite concerned in places that the work they've started to sow the seeds of, use that pun, are going to fall apart, um, that there's times are harder. Um, and their times are becoming more demanding that the paid for services are higher on their commitment list than the work done in the parks. The fact that we've got so many, and we alluded to it in one of the videos earlier, uh, Abbeyfield Park is such a wonderfully well-used park and trying to get people to come to Fair Park, Concord Park, all, all highlighted in, in the videos today. That these parks are really important and we look at the amount of people that visit Fair Park and I think they're, they are important areas. So that was really the question, uh, is there still some commitment within budgets for that to be moving on or is it, um, the end of the line?
Thanks, Chris. And for those who don't know Chris, Chris is a big part of those events that we talked about earlier. As, uh, in terms of supporting the LAC teams and making those events happen. So we should say thank you to you as well for all you do for our area. In terms of the question, I don't specifically know the answer around the green flag scheme. I'll be honest with you, but it does sound like something that we should be working together on from parks. I don't know if you have got anything you can add into it, Darren, who's from our parks department?
Do you need a microphone? Yeah, there's nothing, um, additional allocated to this side of the city. I think the next one to be looked at is Hillsborough Park, uh, looking to have that as a green flag. Fair Park is still going to stay as a green flag. It was, uh, they had a spot check last year and it passed. Uh, the mystery shopper basically, um, the report of that came through and it passed with flying colours. Um, so from that point of view, that's, that's all I can say from that. I'm not a hundred per cent, as you may know, I've only just moved within to parks from facilities. So ask me a building question, I'm all right. But, uh, as far as I'm aware, this side of the city, Fair Park will still be the green flag and that will continue to. Then they're moving on to others. We've just had the green flag come and have a look on some on the other side of the city, Maysbrook and a couple of others, uh, today. So, um, I can let you know how that went if you'd like to know going forward.
And the fact that, sorry, more about the money coming from above that would allow the gardeners that's doing the work to still keep that green flag achievement up, which is hard. And that's what, that was my aim tonight, to try and get that.
I don't, I, I can't speak on the budget side of it, but I think we all, we all know budgets are tight. Um, it is a, it's, well, it's a source of pride for us that we have got so many green flags. So it's not something that we would put to the side, you know, um, but budgets being budgets. We can only do what we can do within the certain timeframes that we've got. But we, you know, we don't try to keep going. And, and to be fair, the, the staff that we have got are very diligent on what they do. That's all I can say on that.
Thanks, Darren. And apologies for putting you on the spoke, but it's, it's good, it's good to get everybody here and hear it direct from the horses' mouth now. I know Mike wants to come in on this.
Thanks, thank you, Fran. I really want, wanted to add that there has, has been some resource going in, into parks in, across the north east of the city. Um, we know that we have the pavilion built, uh, in Parsons Cross Park, um, a couple of years ago. Um, in Fox Hill Park, um, they've, uh, they've put a new pathway down and put a lot of, um, climbing frames and, and. They've, they've put a new pathway down and put a lot of climbing frames and stuff for kids to play in. Where we do have a difficulty, I think, is with, with keeping signs up. It seems to be a resentment to having a sign up that tells you that you are in Fox Hill Park or you're in Wolf Road Pocket Park. But the, but the facilities that have gone in in recent years, as they have with Wolf Road Park a bit before, have been fairly robust and seem to be surviving better.
Just to reply to it, as far as I'm aware, the budget has been maintained this year, so it shouldn't be any difference from last year. There may be some restructuring in staffing to take up different priorities, but as far as the budget's concerned, there's been no, no reductions in the parks budget, but it weren't reported to committees, so I'm assuming things are going to carry on as well this year as they have last year. And it's, it's a success story really and it's something we ought to be telling the world about because in spite of all the cutbacks, we've managed to maintain parks and improve them the last two or three years. So I'm quite proud of that. Some of it's been won off grants and it's not repeated, but on the whole, they've done fairly well, so I think we're okay here.
Is what I would like to see is to make sure that when it comes to awarding green flags and what is the criteria that parks in our LAC are given the equal ability to be heard. Because I would like to know. So that is more what I'm saying with, they have been investing, but what is it that we need to do to retain it? What do we need in order to get it better? Because to me, it's great, I don't live for, well, I don't work for botanical gardens. A lot of people around that area do have a lot of access to open space. What I want to see is that equality and fairness come into here. So I think what I would like is to throw back is, is to say on behalf of you, I would like to know from that committee, what is it that we need to show as an area, as a community to get together? And how can we make sure that our parks will get that investment, retain that investment? Is it more community groups? Is it that? So that's something that I would like to know. And thank you, Chris, for bringing that question. But it's about, isn't it? Because we know that we get all those things that happen in the botanical gardens, like the art in the gardens. Is that things that would bring the investment to this side that would help promote the businesses, the area? I mean, for goodness sake, it's amazing. It just, my ward are as beautiful as anywhere, do you know? In fact, everywhere is as lovely. But we just need to get people to see what is here and I think our parks is one way of doing that. So that is what I would, you know, kind of think that I would like to ask as a councillor is to ask the committee chair to give us a response and I want a response from the committee chair, not an officer.
Sorry, what I forgot to mention was that First Park managed to cash in on the money that was given to improving shopping centres. So First Park got some money and they managed to get some seats and tables in the park where people attending the cafe could, could sit outside and all the flower beds were improved on the back of that money. So it's been creative and finding different plots of, we all know there's different packet pockets of money around we can bid for and if you have a successful, and we have successful friends of, friends of First Park, friends of these parks. It's amazing how voluntary groups can raise cash for their own park. We're currently trying to do it with Concord, who does need a bit of investment to be fair. And that's the next one, I guess, on the line. But First Park's done very well after that regeneration of the shopping centre money really. And so the next step is to spread that work around the other parks who don't need an injection of extra cash.
Thanks. I think, I think you're right and we've also still got some money, some of our LAC funds are for environmental improvement and for parks improvement. So we can also look at how we can use that wisely. But I think Jane's absolutely right that we need to know how are we aiming towards that green flag status really. So I'd suggest that as councillors, we put that question to the parks committee, we get some clear guidance on how we can, and then we can potentially use our LAC funds to build up towards that green flag status in some of our other parks as well, or we can look at how we need to bring in additional funds if that's the best way forward, if that seems sensible and a good answer to your question. Got Mick's hand up, is that on this, Mick, or is this a separate question?
Yeah, no, it's reference the parks. Yeah, it's all right having this money, but can we have some communication please before you do it, rather than, yeah, it looks good, but if you'd have done it another way, the way that the people that's using the parks want it doing, rather than coming back and said, well, we've done this for you, which doesn't always suit.
I appreciate what you're saying, Mick. I think with the particular funding that went into First Park, it was about business recovery. So actually it needed to be driven by the businesses. It was about bringing more people into First Park Centre and so it was the businesses that were the key drivers of that funding and certainly investing in the park, more places to sit down so people use the cafes more and so on. So that particular funding was driven by businesses. But, you know, different pots of money, there'll be different, different ways to feed into that if you like. But I, you know, I totally agree that we need, we want to hear from people, the improvements that they want to see and not just impose improvements on people, they should be collectively agreed. And again, I know we've heard quite a bit tonight about communication and I'd just remind people that we have got a survey out at the moment as well about how we can better communicate across the area, which I think we've spoken about at the last public meeting. So I'll encourage people, I don't know if we can maybe send a link out to that again to people who've come tonight, so that we're doing a bit more around how we communicate across the area. Mark?
I think Mick raises a really interesting and pivotal point that we need to really focus on is how do we allow our community to have the input they want? Now, the friends of groups do their best, but they can only do their work and their volunteers. What I would think and following on from what Jane said, it's quite right, we need the parks committees to maybe come back to us. So at Parkwood Springs, we've got a really dedicated officer and Neil's spoken to us about the work of John there. So he's one of the rangers. But the rangers, it feels, appear in other parts of the city more than they do in our parts of the city. And those rangers are really pivotal for being in the parks during the day and for having those conversations and those engagement things that can help our LAC officers. So maybe as part of those crescents to the committees is how much of the rangers' time do we as an area get? Because it feels like our patch is often underserved. We've got dedicated officers that have been in our parks for a while and we've got Darren that's joining that team, but they're fighting the battle, certainly against the Better Parks bit, we don't necessarily get the engagement. I don't think there's a Better Parks officer here today. They do attend other LACs, why not this one? And we need more of that recognition so they come to our meetings to give us the same prestige and privileges that other bits get. So we need to have those. I don't want people going, telling us any more than they go to Millhouses Park because we've got lovely parks and they're overlooked and under-resourced and I don't want to see that happening. So those questions, I think, we do need the committees to answer too.
I suggest that as councillors, we get together and work through some questions that we put to that committee then as, and so it won't actually be that escalation group, but as councillors, we can put those members' questions into that committee. Is there any further questions from the floor that people want to ask this evening? Chris, go on.
We spoke over so earlier again about the budget and intended budgets coming through for the new financial year and it seems that there's an amount of apportioned money and then there's a little bit of reserve in the under care that's been bandied around. It's been great to see in local publications recently the installation of defibrillators at a couple of key locations, Concord Park was referred to and there's been others. Is there a way that some of this money could actually be used more to find and fund some of these defibrillator units if a suitable housing and accommodation can be found? I think there's plenty of, seems plenty of sites around our area that could maybe benefit from them. It's just another random thought whilst we're looking at it.
Thanks, Chris. It was LAC funding that funded a lot of those defibrillators that are out there. I'll be honest, it's taken quite a while to actually get them in place. They are reasonably widespread around the area now. And there are various other funding streams for defibrillators as well, so I've seen various ways that you can get them funded. So I think if we've got a suggestion for where we could have one, a venue where one would be useful, then we can, there's probably different routes we can look at to get funding. But I think what we found during the process of fitting these ones is that we probably need to identify where they go and any of the potential barriers to having them fitted, rather than just buying, buying a load and then working out where they go. And it's probably a more efficient process if we do it that way around. Mick?
Yeah, I believe that the brushers were the second people to get one of these defibrillators. Ingalls Gym, they've got one outside. We got the one outside the First Park Library from funding and using some of our own money. But you'll find that there's a lot more than what you think. Most of the firms have got them and they won't tell you. All your dentists and doctors and people like that. But to put them outside, you've got to watch where you're putting them. Touch wood, the one at First Park, I think it's only been broken into twice. It's not been used a lot, it wasn't there to get used a lot. But when you look around and different things, I mean, most of the football clubs now, they're getting it through different funding and rugby clubs and, but you've just got to think where you're putting them for the vandalism, which the communities could come in again and sort of say, well, where do we want it? Because yeah, First Park Library's all right for when the shops is open, but people don't always have heart attacks when the shops is open, they won't play the game. But now I think that's a very good idea, but it's just getting the funding to do it. With the cabinet, I think it's about a thousand pounds, just over a thousand.
I think the funding's out there, I think, and if, I think you can go online and find a map of them as well.
Defib Finder, is it, Darren?
Yeah. Yeah. So if you look up Defib Finder on Google, you'll actually find a map of where they are nearest your area, you can see exactly where they're all located. But like I say, I think if there's a particular place where you think one should be located, then, and, you know, there is quite a bit of working out who owns it and how it gets the power and all those kinds of things that need working out, but we can certainly look for the location. And like I say, I think there's some external funding out there as well for defibrillators. Any other questions from the floor? Go on, Mick, you're just not going to let Chris out question you tonight, are you? I thought he was going to for a minute there.
No, I thought I'd let somebody else have a go, but you know, I can't resist. The thing that I'm concerned about is the state of council housing. I mean, I'm involved quite a lot with different, well, I'd have said different meetings, but we ain't got, we've only got two now. Need bringing back so the tenants can have a word. Went to one last week, Hanap, and none of the figures was on target. Everything were under target. We never used to be like this, but how are we going to get it back? I mean, you've got to mention in the Star this morning about the houses that we're going to build, they wanted to cut back on the number of houses, but we've been shouting for these houses for years, ripe to buy, one for one. I mean, there's at least 1,300 properties stood empty. When are we going to do something about these? I'll try at the meetings, so I'll try through the councillors. At one bit, I've come to full council and had my say there, but I'm afraid I'm getting a little bit past it now. But it does need bringing up and something needs doing. We're paying the extra rent, but it's taken two and three years to get repairs done. And what happens? Nothing.
I hear you, Mick. And can I just say that part of the purpose of these meetings is so that you don't have to go to full council every time, it's so that we're coming out to you so we can hear you more directly. As you probably know, because it was probably in the finger red this morning, what, what we did agree at a budget council for the housing budget last week, which I will say was a Labour amendment, was that we want more of those advisory panels involving more tenants and actually not just our tenants, but the tenants of housing associations and other people who live on our estate. Because actually estates are all our business now, you know, it's not just down to tenants, how our estates look and how they're kept. And we want to see housing advisory panels attached to LAC areas so we've got a lot more local discussions going on around the state of our housing. I know you're absolutely right around some of the repairs. I think the void stuff, the empty houses is coming down, that's one of the ones that is coming down. We had a report, there's a report out today that shows it's come down, but it's literally come out today to go to the housing committee next week. And the winter time is the worst time for our repairs staff, we always have a lot more repairs reported in the winter. But we've asked that we have the performance data comes far more regularly to the housing committee so that we are continuing to tackle that issue and that we are seeing whether there's real progress being made on making repairs happen. I know it's the biggest part of my casework, I'm sure that's the case for most other councillors up here, is 60, 70% of the issues that get raised with me are about housing. Not just council housing, there's lots of problems in the private sector as well, but you know, that's for us as a council, we still have some responsibility for making sure that people in the city have got safe and warm homes to live in. And I feel like I always end up saying this at these meetings, a lot of this, I'll be honest with you, we do need the government to step in on this as well. And I know that we've got the Labour policy around this as we're moving into, hopefully a new, where we get past the next election, that we do have some policy coming in around decent homes and decent housing standards and around looking at the rights of people who are renting and the state of our housing. And I am hoping that by working together with government, by working with South Yorkshire Mayor, combined authority and by the work that we're doing as a council, we can start to develop much better housing policy and we have much better programmes for renewing our housing and that we get on top, as a council, we've got to get on top of our repairs, we've got to keep doing that and we've got to keep holding them to account. And that's really why we want to see these local area panels as well attached to the LACs that we're looking a lot more closely at housing and particularly on repairs. I can see you want to come back.
I don't know if you'll be able to do anything about it, but you are on the repairs committee, aren't you? The housing repairs. We used to have a meeting which Mick used to go to, used to call Investment Repairs Partnership Group. And they were well-attended and we were told what was going to happen in our areas, i.e. oh, you're going to get a new roof, you're going to get some decent homes work. So can I press you or the committee to get this meeting back up and running and try and get some of these issues sorted out, especially repairs?
Thanks. Before my turn, that one, but it sounds like a great idea and I'm very happy to raise that. I'm very conscious it is seven o'clock, we've got a few people leaving, so I'm going to wind it up there, but I'll pick up back with you. And like I say, we are definitely hoping that we will have, well, we have already passed as a council that we will be setting up some more advisory work around housing that will involve our tenants and residents a lot more. So we'll definitely come back to you on that one. I will. Thanks ever so much, everybody, for coming tonight. We've had another successful meeting and I hope you'll all come back to us in our new year when we get back.